That's okay. Good morning Superintendent Blatt, President Hardisty, distinguished members of the board, and our wonderful visitors here today. It is my great privilege to recognize two schools for earning the prestigious distinction of being nominated for the Blue Ribbon Award for their academic performance in the 24-25 school year. This honor represents the highest levels of academic excellence and progress and reflects the remarkable dedication of the administrators and school staff to their students, families, and communities. Being nominated for Blue Ribbon designation is more than a symbol of success. It signifies a deep and ongoing commitment to excellence, innovation, and education. These two schools stand as a model for what can be achieved when a school community unites around the shared goal of helping every student thrive. On behalf of the West Virginia Department of Education, we extend our sincere congratulations and gratitude to Neal Elementary and Steenrod Elementary for their outstanding leadership and achievement. Your work not only inspires your students but also uplifts our entire state education community. Congratulations on being nominated for this well-deserved recognition. And so the first school we are going to bring up is Steenrod Elementary from Ohio County with Superintendent Dr. Kimberly Miller, Principal Michelle Dietrich, and teachers Jennifer Schmidt and Tara Brewbaker.
Good morning and thank you. Thank you, President Hardisty, members of the West Virginia Board of Education, Superintendent Blatt, and colleagues. It's my honor and distinct pleasure to stand here in front of you as Steenrod Elementary School Principal alongside Mrs. Terry Brewbaker, who is our kindergarten through third grade interventionist, Mrs. Jennifer Schmidt, who is a third grade teacher, our school-selected Teacher of the Year, and President of our PTA. I am so proud of our staff, students, families, and community members for supporting us to be our best, and I am also fortunate to have an extremely supportive Board of Education in Ohio County and Superintendent Dr. Kim Miller, who leads us with positivity and a drive for constant reflection and growth orientation. We are also grateful for the support of Mrs. Karen Butine, who shines a spotlight on all the great things that happen in Ohio County schools. We appreciate this recognition with the national recognition being discontinued, so we appreciate the state of West Virginia for designating us as a West Virginia Blue Ribbon School and for the opportunity to share a little bit about what makes Steenrod special. We know every school is special and has unique things that happen every day, but I'd like to share a little bit about Steenrod. We're one of nine elementary schools in Ohio County, and we are a district that's guided by the belief that together we achieve. The district vision of teamwork and shared purpose is very much alive in our building. Collaboration forms the foundation of our culture. Students, staff, and families all work together to create a positive, welcoming environment where every child can thrive. We have the tradition of choosing a motto, a vision that drives each school year, and for the past three years we've stuck with the same one because we love it, and it is "Choose to Be." We start with "Choose to Be" because we want students to know that they have agency. They may not control every situation, but they can control their response. We believe deeply that we choose to be Steenrod, we choose to be united. We choose to be values-led. Aligned with the district vision, our staff created a mission statement that guides all we do. We educate the whole child on a journey through compassion, kindness, and respect. We believe academic excellence is essential, but so is the social and emotional well-being of every child. Teachers build caring relationships that foster belonging and help students feel seen, valued, and respected. From the moment students arrive in the morning, they're greeted warmly by staff outside, in the hallways, in the cafeteria, and in the classroom. If a student looks down, there's a caring adult who notices. We make space for students to connect with trusted adults. We choose to be student-driven. In the classroom, our teachers are guided by a student-first mindset. Instruction is standards-based and focused on mastery and deep understanding, and collaboration happens across grade levels through vertical professional learning communities to ensure continuity and growth. Our schedule is intentionally designed to provide multi-tiered systems of support for every grade level, using the strengths of related arts teachers, interventionists, instructional aides, student teachers, and me, the administrator. We are not a Title I school, so we rely on all the help that we can get. We choose to be family-oriented. At Steenrod, families are true partners. Our PTA has been recognized at the state level for its membership and engagement. They are incredibly creative and generous, providing grants for classroom projects and whole-school enrichment. Our families come from many different backgrounds and bring unique strengths. Each one is valued and celebrated as part of our Steenrod family, a cardinal community grounded in positivity, inclusion, and belonging. We have a partnership with Youth Service Systems, which has placed a grant-funded expanded-school mental health specialist in our school. This position allows us to provide support to families through immediate and direct services. And we choose to be Star Cardinals. Steenrod has been recognized as a Tier One PBIS Spotlight School for our commitment to supporting all students through proactive expectations and interventions. Each day begins with a Star Cardinal pledge, and you can hear the voices of everyone from kindergarten through fifth grade reaffirming their commitment to respect themselves and one another. Our PBIS framework is woven into everything we do. As Star Cardinals, we teach and model what it means to be safe, trustworthy, accountable, and respectful. At Steenrod Elementary, we provide a culture of achievement, kindness, and community. We're proud to prioritize academic excellence and the social-emotional growth that sustains it. We're a school where every child knows they matter and every family knows they belong. We thank you for your continued support and partnership in helping us make that vision a reality every day. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Sullivan?
Just a comment. Who wouldn't want to be where you are?
Who wouldn't want to be? Thank you for that. What my greatest start to my day is greeting the students outside every morning. When it gets cold, I'm not as excited, but it's a pleasure to do it. We have a fantastic community and just wonderful community support.
And I think you captured it this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Am I staying here?
We can take a picture now.
Okay.
Yes, can touch.
Yeah, I'm gonna lean on you. Huh? I'll lean on you.
Yeah.
So if we can have the back row shift to your left just a little, keep going. One more gap. Did what have you moved just a little? All right, look at me, here we go. One, two, three.
Yep. You're right in. Yep, sorry. Perfect, thank you. I just want to see your mic face.
Congratulations.
Okay. Stay right here. Hello, Bree, can you come up there? We'll take your picture before your presentation, please. Time for the big perspective. Thank you.
Is the middle for me, please? Girls coming to the back, yep. Right in front of the board members. You guys can scoot back as well. If you have this rows come forward in the back, please. Sullivan, go a little bit more to your left. Here we go. And one, two, three. Does anyone else need photos from the school? Yeah, absolutely. Okay, I'm good to go. Thanks so much.
Been beard.
Next school is?
There we go, thank you. Our next school is Neal Elementary in Wood County, and with them today have Superintendent Christie Willis, Principal Bree Marlowe, former Principal Linda Bruni-Carty, and former Assistant Principal Ryan McIntyre.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us here. Superintendent Blatt, President Hardisty, and all the board members, thank you very much. In my 32 years, I've never been involved in something so grand, so I appreciate being here. We were so excited when we were asked to apply to be a Blue Ribbon School, and it's not an easy application process, as you know, but we worked really hard at it, and it was everyone in the school who worked hard at it. And to find out that it wasn't going to come to full fruition was a little disappointing, so I really appreciate you all having us to be recognized so that we can take that back to our students and our staff, even though I'm not there anymore. I am a grandmother there, and I can be proud with all of them, so we do appreciate it. And your school sounds lovely. Yes, I would love to go there. So, anyway. Neal Elementary is located in Vienna, West Virginia, and we're right next to the Ohio River. When we stand out to welcome our students, we can see the waves going in the Ohio River. There are few schools that are like that. The Williamstown Elementary used to be right next to the Ohio River, and it's not too far now. We are a Title I school, and at the time, last year, we served approximately 365 students in pre-K through fifth grade. We also were getting ready to celebrate our 100th anniversary of being there, our 100th birthday, and this year, under Mrs. Marlowe's, they did bring that to a wonderful event celebrating that, and it was amazing to me. I was there 12 years, and to see the different people who would come in with great-grandchildren, not grandchildren, great-grandchildren, and tell me, "I went to school here," and that happened all the time. They said, "I graduated on that stage down there," because they were going first through eighth grade in those days. So it is definitely a community where people stay, and it's a school where they are proud. The community definitely supports the whole. Using data to drive instruction and actively participating in leadership roles across various school committees, including leadership committees, safety committees, and climate committees. The community and parent involvement are an integral part of our culture. Numerous events happen there all year. Kindness is a core value at Neal Elementary. It is promoted through direct instruction by teachers, the school counselor, the nurse. Everyone fosters kindness so that we can make sure that our students see how important it is. Neal students consistently shine beyond the classroom, excelling in academic competitions such as Math Field Day, Spelling Bee, going all the way to the state for Math Field Day. I think every year that I was there, someone went to the state. That's not easy to do. That's not easy to do. We have wonderful instruction that guides them and teaches them and helps them get there. Our Spelling Bee's, our Science Fair, and Social Studies Fair. The school also boasts a top-tier music program with a strong tradition of performance and excellence. With a firm commitment to student growth, community partnership, and continuous improvement, Neal Elementary exemplifies educational excellence in West Virginia and beyond. The school community takes pride in providing the best for its students, ensuring that they thrive both academically and personally. And to show you that people come back, Mrs. Marlowe's students, her and children went all the way through, and now she's back. So it is just a wonderful, wonderful place to be. My grandchildren, four of them, attend, and it will continue to be a wonderful place to learn. And we appreciate the support of Mrs. Willis and the Board Office for all the things that we try to do there. And so I didn't have anything huge written, but that is what I wanted to tell you. So would anybody else like to say anything? This is Mr. McIntyre, Mrs. Willis, Mrs. Marlowe. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any one of the questions, Ms. Sullivan?
Just, excuse me, just a comment. I'm glad to hear that you're focusing on kindness and respect, particularly in the current environment. So if you can pass those values on to your children, it'll make all the difference in the world. So thank you.
You're welcome, and I agree 100%. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Thank you.
Next is delegations. Miss Day.
Good morning, President Hardisty, Vice President Abel Dick, Superintendent, and members of the Board. We have several delegations today. I believe we have 12. Yes, we have 12. Our first is Betty Jarvis. A discussion on vaccines. Is Ms. Jarvis here? Ms. Jarvis, not with us. Okay. Moving right along. Christina Gardo on closing of Tenerton Elementary School in Upsher County. Christine. Christina is not here. Okay. How about Jeff Mace? All right, Jeff Mace is here from Roan County. Roundtable discussion and work session concerning West Virginia's student funding aid formula in rural schools in West Virginia.
Sorry about that. Good morning. President Hardisty, Superintendent Black, members of the Board. My name is Jeff Mace, Board Member from Roan County. I know you're aware well of our situation and our measures last Thursday to vote on the closures consolidation. I would like to speak on a different topic at this point, though. Although this has been a very difficult process and for everyone involved, I want to bring to your attention that Superintendent Michelle Talato in our county has brought forth a roundtable discussion and work session that she is trying, is establishing next Monday at one of our locations, the Gary Elementary Middle School, to help facilitate a discussion on problems with rural counties and closures consolidations and the school aid formula. She's then invited groups from county superintendents, the West Virginia legislatures, county treasurers, many of those that are in similar situations as Roan County with rural populations, declining enrollments, declining populations. And the goal is to get to be, to get a conversation started. Okay, I think what comes out and just from our process, what we have discovered during this time, you know, obviously, we're not unique to any rural county. But the, what we've seen, observations and conclusions through going through this is that what we've provided as far as an impact statement kind of lacks a lot. What you get from the impact statement really is when you have the public hearing and have the total input from the community, that's the total impact that you really find out what's happening in these in these towns and these small communities. And like it's been said and mentioned, these are hard decisions. And it was put before us as board members that this was going to be hard decisions, and we needed to make hard decisions. What you find, and I think it might, is also they appear to be impossible decisions, right? Because the alternatives are just very vague. There's not a lot of direction for local schools on what will happen to these students in these rural counties, in these rural areas. Do we continue to provide longer bus rides? I implore you to take a look at that waiver, when that waiver comes in before you next month. Every bus ride will be impacted in those communities. And so I implore you for that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Our next delegation is Brittany Brogan. Speak on the issue. She's with the organization Stand For Kids on the issue of immunizations. And all of our delegations will have two minutes.
Hi, everyone. I just came to say thank you for upholding our immunization laws. I am with a newly formed organization called Stand For Kids, but I'm also the co-chair of Government Relations for the West Virginia Association of School Nurses. I am a school nurse in Lincoln County. So I understand firsthand how important this is to our state and to our kids' health throughout the state, especially for you Superintendent Black. I know how hard it must have been and everything that you guys have been put through after making this decision. I kind of ran for office a couple of years ago and mainly ran on a pro-immunization standpoint and faced a lot of that myself. It's brutal out there, and all of the school nurses across the state appreciate each and every one of you for making that decision. I can't imagine not having these immunization laws in our state. I have two students just in my small county of Lincoln, who, one has faced a transplant and one who is currently fighting leukemia. I'm trying not to cry. They are both immunized. Their parents chose to immunize them. However, their immune systems are completely shot because of the immune suppressants that they're on. Without our immunization laws, there'd be no way I could protect them at the schools. Absolutely no way. And I understand the opposing view of this as well. I'm not oblivious to it. But whenever decisions are made, those are the two kids that I think about the most. They've already faced so much in their short, little lives. And just having them protected, it means a lot. Also, for other kids at risk, I can't imagine how many days kids would be out of school if we didn't have this, up to two weeks for measles. You know, that's a lot, especially kids that don't have much. And that's the only place they get to eat. It's very, very important and very near to my heart. I just thank you again. I don't have anything else to say. I just wanted to come and say thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have Janie Gorley with Stand For Kids. Just speak on. Janine, I'm sorry, Janine Gorley with Stand For Kids on the issue of vaccine.
I've thought a lot of things. All right, my name is Janine Gorley, and good morning, everyone. I'm a retired principal of Chandler Elementary. At the time I was principal, it was 90% free and reduced lunch. It was the lowest socioeconomic school in the state. And before that, I was a special educator for 14 years. Then I worked for the central office in testing and chairing IEPs, and then I became a principal. So I've had the gamut of the education, and I loved every job I had. And most of my jobs, I was dealing with children who are less advantaged. And that's why I think it's so important for your support because so many of the parents were as disadvantaged. And sometimes we like to criticize them, but many times the parents were unable emotionally, unable educationally, and many, many things compounded their inability to make the best decisions for their children. So I think having the requirement for vaccines is so important because it would not get done in many instances. Not because the parents didn't believe, but because they just didn't have the emotional stability to get everything they needed to get done. So I thank you today for your support in the vaccination process. And I hope you continue to support it and that we do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have Janie Clayer Woodson speak on the issue of school vaccines.
With protocol already being established, I will just say good morning to everyone. I am Janie Clayer Woodson, and I like to think of myself as an experienced grandparent and educator. I have a lifetime teaching credential, and I'm still learning, though. I enjoy working in the community as a community activist. And I'm also a member of International Missionary Society, and I work a lot with youth around the country. And let me just say, it has been my privilege to say that West Virginia has one of the best vaccination laws in the nation. And I am so proud that you are holding that line. So first of all, I'd like to say thank you. Keep up your good work. And additionally, I am requesting that we safeguard not only our children of today, but if we truly believe that children are our future, then it's up to us to preserve the future for them in their best interest because they don't vote. And we all know today, it's all about who gets the loudest, who has the loudest voice, and who gets the most votes. But again, I applaud you for looking after our children today and in the future. Thank you so much, and have a blessed day.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have Elaine Anderson speak on the issue of immunizations.
One of my strongest memories at the age of five was of my mother standing over me, looking down and crying. My pediatrician, who was Dr. Baldock of Charleston, had come to our home. He had on house slippers since he came immediately following the call from my parents. My back and my neck were rigid. I felt very sick. I had polio. However, this dreaded disease is completely preventable. I remember very little else. Fleeting remembrances of physical therapy rehab with weights on my feet and water in large stainless steel tubs of swirling, swirling water, the first hot tub. This disease runs the span of very light to moderate to severe to death in intensity. If parents who want to exempt their children from vaccines could see the suffering children and view entire rooms with several rows of iron lungs, I believe they would have a change of heart. Pictures do not seem to have any effect on their determination. If they could see the result of even a mild case, perhaps they would choose willingly to vaccinate. I was one of three little girls on the west side of Charleston diagnosed with polio around the same time. The other two were daughters of doctors. Polio was no respecter of persons. The fear that parents and others had of this terrible disease had no boundaries. Fear, which was unrelenting. Two of the little girls had mild cases, but one was severe with total body paralysis. Her recovery was devastating, and it lasted her entire life. She was confined to a wheelchair and had very little control of her body, which was severely twisted and very awkward and very difficult. Travel was by special van. She had attendance almost constantly and died one night in bed, a victim of fire and smoke inhalation. Her night attendant was outside smoking and claimed she could not get back in the house. Polio can still be found in some places in the world, and travel makes it possible for the disease to spread to unvaccinated people. In time, it will return. Consider what has occurred with measles. Heard immunity must be maintained. It is imperative that vaccinations continue for the safety and welfare of others. The vaccine saves lives. My name is Elaine Anderson, retired public school teacher, and I am a survivor.
Next, we have Susan Parsons speaking on the issue of truth. Parsons.
Hello. I'm reading from the book of 1 Corinthians, Chapter 13, verse 1 through 13, circa AD 59. Though I speak with the tongues of men and of angels and have not charity, I am become as sounding breasts or a tinkling symbol. And though I have the gift of prophecy and understand all mystery and all knowledge, and though I have all faith so that I could remove mountains and have not charity, I am nothing. And though I bestow all my goods to feed the poor, and though I give my body to be burned and have not charity, it profiteth me nothing. Charity suffereth long and is kind. Charity env'ith not. Charity wanteth not itself, is not puffed up, does not behave itself unseemly, seeks not her own, is not easily provoked, thinketh no evil, rejoiceth not in iniquity, but rejoiceth in the truth, bears all things, believes all things, hopes all things, endures all things. Charity never fails, but where there are prophecies, they shall fail. Whether there be tongues, they shall cease. Whether there be knowledge, it shall vanish away. For we know in part, and we prophesy in part. But when that which is perfect is come, then that which is in part shall be done away. When I was a child, I spoke as a child. I understood as a child. I thought as a child. But when I became a man, I put away childish things. For now we see through a glass darkly, but then face to face. Now I know in part, but then shall I know even as also I am known. And now abideth faith, hope, and charity, these three. But the greatest of these is charity. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Our next delegation is Alisa Payne. Her topic is stacks of books versus pieces of paper. She, you could, we only have two minutes. We can only take the delegation.
Good morning, Board Members and Superintendent. After witnessing President Hardy's shocking visual at the last meeting, I've had some thoughtful observations. First, I felt that you were saying West Virginia Department of Ed has a lot of rules to follow compared to charter schools and homeschooling. I submit you are comparing apples to oranges. The Department of Education currently, in its current form, was established in 1958. Charter schools were legalized in 2019, and the Hope Scholarship was established in '21. It stands to reason there would be 60 more years of rules for public education. Second, I felt you were saying West Virginia education needs more money. You spend $14,000 per child annually with an increase of $13,000 since 2020. We rank consistently at the bottom five through the past 50 years, currently at 45 overall, 48th in SAT scores, with spending at 31. In the business world, that is not a good return on investment. Hope Scholarship spending is at $53,000 per child annually. And doing the math here, that leaves, people that leave homeschool are not taking the $14,000, which leaves an 18, 8,700 difference. And I'm just curious, does that money stay in the public school system? From a business model, your expenses are high, higher than you require. You have to trim and reallocate. You are losing students, clearly, to attrition, but also to some students taking advantage of the Hope Scholarship. But I never hear the question, "Why?" As a small business owner, if people, my customers are leaving and my staff is leaving, the first question I ask is, "Why?" And the second question is, "I take responsibility for that. What have I done to cause this situation?" Because the buck stops with me, as the buck stops with you guys. You have rogue behaviors on parts of your students, staff, and administrators, inappropriate interactions with, list goes on, I already said. It's unfortunate.
Next, we have David Lipowski with West Virginia Professional Educators. Our legislative wish list is his topic.
Good morning. I'd like to share with you this morning a wish list that we're working on. And, you know, Christmas is just around the corner, and we're all making our lists and checking them twice. So this is a list that I'll share with you today. Might get to all of it. But we are also in the middle of our annual membership survey, and we're receiving feedback from our members, and we'll use it to formulate our 2026 legislative goals, and we'll share those with you here in a month or two. So here's what we're working on so far. Student Aid Funding Formula. The state student funding formula needs to be reconfigured to enable schools to be equally funded and provide needed financial support to county districts and schools with lower student enrollment and lower tax bases. Items in 18A of the West Virginia School Law's annotated codebook will require reconfiguring, which requires legislative action, legislative action. Alternative Learning Centers mentioned in SB 199. The idea behind SB 199 addressing student behavior and safety was to aid teachers, administrators, and staff to better manage disruptive and violent student behavior in the classroom. But most counties lack adequate alternative learning locations to work with students that have been pulled from the classroom due to these extreme behavioral issues. This is a weak point in the plan from the very beginning. Again, it will require legislative action to strengthen this weak link. PEIA Premium Increases and Future Plans for Solvency. The latest proposal from the PEIA Finance Board is a 3% premium increase for Plan Year 2027. This is after a 14% increase in the past year. We need a better plan in place to solve the PEIA funding problem. The nine-point outline of possible options presented to legislators during the September 2025 interim session needs to be taken under consideration by the legislature to determine if these options could benefit PEIA. And I'll jump down here. We've got more, but I'll share more with you next month. Salaries. This has become an annual statement. The West Virginia Legislature needs to secure funding to increase salaries, to remain competitive. This is one of the components in the teacher shortage. Actually, I'll go ahead and along with the fact that we also need to allow our educators to save their sick days for their use when they retire. That will help also take care of the teacher shortage. So again, to be continued. Thank you.
Next, we have Mickey Blackwell with West Virginia Principals Association.
You just hold on. I want to say good morning to everybody and say my name is Mickey Blackwell. I am the Executive Director of the West Virginia Principals Association, the largest association of school administrators throughout West Virginia. As it's November, I'd like to theme some thanks for everything we do. I first would like to say thanks for the great principals that we saw here today. Principal Dietrich, Principal Marlowe, Principal Brennacallo, and I hope I said that last name correctly. We know that there can be a good school with a good principal, but there cannot be a great school without a great principal. And we have several examples of folks who have been great principals in our audience. Janine is here, and when I saw her, I said, stay for a minute. I want to say your name as well. And Jeff's here, Amon's here, and I'm thankful that Ms. Sullivan is here once again. The importance of the principal is paramount. That being said, I'd like to invite everyone in listening voice to attend the West Virginia Principals Association Conference. Go to westvirginia principals.org, wvprincipals.org, and you will see we are announcing the National NAESP Executive Director and President will both be in attendance along with several other esteemed guests. So we are very glad to have them with us. I want to say thank you. Thank you that November is Native American Month, which gives us the opportunity to celebrate diversity, inclusion, and equity. I want to say thank you for public education, which feeds our kids during these times of of lack of funding from other folks, the same folks who won't recognize principals, or the same folks who don't want to feed our children. But you don't have to worry because you know that that school is going to feed those children. We were talking about public ed and homeschool, and I would just like to say that no public education child ever starved to death attending school. That being said, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I hope that everyone has a great holiday, and go and visit your schools, all of you folks. Go visit, tell your principal thanks, tell your teachers thanks, and just be thankful that we have public education, the greatest, the greatest symbol of democracy in the world today. Thank you very much.
And our last delegation is Dale Lee, Education, West Virginia. Topic is giving thanks.
God help me. I'm thinking like Mickey Blackwell. My name is Dale Lee. I'm co-president of Education, West Virginia, speaking on behalf of our other co-president, Kristy Skidmore. And first, I'd like to thank, as we celebrated Veterans Day yesterday, all the veterans who gave their lives and their service for this country and made it what a great country it is, fighting for freedoms that we have. And it's the freedom to choose the type of school that you would want, to choose the way you want your child educated, and to choose whether that child should be vaccinated or not. It's also the freedom to choose the sanctity of our public schools and to choose the right to protect the public, the full public, the greater good of all. I know my time's going to run short, so the second thing I want to say is we need to thank our educators who give their lives for the children. I spoke last night as I was flying back from Arizona to a ESL teacher, and the stories that she was telling me for her students are just another example of how great our educators across the state are, how much they care about their kids. I would also like to say, when you compare our SAT scores, I want to remind you that that is our assessment for our high school kids, for our 11th graders. And all of our kids take the SAT, not just those going to out-of-state colleges. If you look at our ACT scores, we're actually 25th in the nation in our ACT scores. So we do some great things in public education. We do some great things for our students, but the main thing we do is make a difference in kids' lives. So I want to thank our educators, our teachers, our bus drivers, our cooks, our service personnel for making that difference for every kid. Thank you.
There are no other delegations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is our school safety annual report. Whitlow.
Good morning, President Hart, President Gabriel, Superintendent Blatt, members of the board. West Virginia Code 18548 requires all county boards, public charter schools, and the multi-county centers to annually assess the safety needs of their schools and report that to us. That comes in the form of a survey done in the June and July timeframe. Then we are required to compile that information and present it to Lucia at, you know, in the next month or two, usually when that happens. So in your attachments, you have the 2425 report that is before you. First couple pages is introduction and definitions, and I won't read all this to you. But the next one is a breakdown of needs that the counties had that are put in kind of buckets of priority. And that's just to kind of identify needs and be able to hopefully fund these kind of in the buckets of need. The next section is with the X marks, those are the things that counties needed. And to the right of that in the green column is the financial cost of those items as presented by the counties. And then in the 2526, but excuse me, the green column is what was spent last year, and then the 2526 column is the financial need moving forward for the requests. I did want to highlight one thing in the prioritized breakdown, and that's the school safety entrances, is the, in 2020, when all this started, it represented that 368 schools needed safe school entries. But currently reported, it is 232. So there has been that gradual decline of that need due to counties, you know, taking a priority for safety and investing funds to get those entries built. So I did want to highlight that drastic drop in those. And then finally, just as a summary, you'll see that local counties spent $40,709,676 last year, and then we are requesting $252 million moving forward. And then you can see in the blue column what those amounts are by county. I do want to say we try not to put specific needs, what the counties are asking for safety reasons. We don't want to identify, you know, things that counties need because it'd be, could be used for nefarious things. Was there any questions about the report?
Any questions, Ms. Sullivan?
First of all, Mike, thank you for this very well documented report. It's thorough. It's comprehensive. I believe the School Board Associate, the SBA met last week. Do you know if they funded any safety measures?
We'll learn that come December. I know there were several safe school entries proposed and some of what the counties had and different things, but we'll learn that at their December meeting what was funded.
Okay. And now, you know, their need is just overall tremendous. Is there any interest in the legislature, do you know, to fund any of this aside from the SBA?
I know in the past years, there's been, I think the year before last, a million dollars was funded. I don't think anything was put in that fund last year. They do spend some money, like on the mapping, they put some money toward that that goes toward safety. So there's some other ways they spend money, but in general, there hasn't been like a bulk, you know, purchase of one of these priorities.
Okay. Well, ideally, I assume this report will be shared with the governor and with the legislators.
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Wood?
Yes, I just note there's like a six-fold increase in requests versus what was spent in '25. Is there any rhyme or reason? That's a big, that's a big mullfire.
Yeah, and it's always kind of projected that way. These numbers kind of have been similar throughout the years. And one, there's a big need out there for things, and then it's getting into a lot of details of of things that counties need that, you know, maybe outside their bounds or outside their ability to pay for. So they're kind of putting requests in there for things. There's also some things in here that we've identified. One of them being like security cameras, legislature in the past year says, has asked what would it cost to put security cameras in all the schools? So some of these numbers include things that the legislature has asked for numbers for. So it kind of has a few different levels of requests there. So that's kind of the difference in the two numbers. One is kind of a, I don't want to say wish list, but it's a, it's a what they're requesting.
Okay, then just to follow on, if the legislature would magically grant all this, how fast can $252 million be actually be spent?
Well, that
To accomplish these?
That would be the thing. I know even with safe school entries, there's only so many that you can build. There's only so many designers, there's only so many contractors. So I know with the resource officers, we don't have enough people in this state to accomplish this. You know, there's staffing shortages with everybody. So it would take a while to accomplish this. This is kind of a big, broad, you know, list of things, most definitely.
So is there, is there a schedule behind this gross number that says, basically, this is how and how long it would take us to actually spend the requested dollars?
We can develop that. I don't think there's a schedule currently. Right now, it's just kind of a a survey up to the counties, and then they respond back, this is what we need. But then if we were to get some funding or anything like that, we definitely could see how we could schedule that out in years to come, because like you said, it would take a while to accomplish this.
I think it might be good if these numbers could be prioritized and then scheduled out in terms of what you can accomplish in a year's time, or I don't know if this represents a three or four-year timeframe, but it's certainly an important topic.
Yes.
So appreciate the work. Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you, sir. Yeah. Is there a motion to approve the 2025 school safety report as presented?
So moved.
Been moving, Mr. Wood.
Second.
Second, Mr. Gabriel. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Department of Education reports, Superintendent Blatt.
Thank you. We have a couple of things to highlight that have transpired since our last board meeting, and then some additional information to share. You may have noticed when you came in out in the hall, we had our communities and schools being present matters banner. And that banner, we traveled the state with and did seven different events across the state where we had partners with our communities and schools program that stepped up for kids. And, you know, our partners were able to provide funding to meet some of the basic needs of kids and to make things easier for our teachers and our counselors and our site coordinators. At that event, we talked about what being present matters, and I think we heard that from some of our principals this morning. The fact that that one caring adult makes all of the difference. But we want to thank Sean Ball, Sean and Angela Ball, Lisa and Larry Pack, and Brad and Elise Smith for their donations to our schools to help provide those basic needs. And it came at an extremely critical time when we were looking at the food shortages and the federal funding that had been held up. And so anyone that would like to pledge to be present for students and would like to sign the banner, you're welcome to do so. Another great event that we've had over the past couple of weeks was our culinary challenge that we did at Ogilvy in Wheeling, and we brought together teams from nine high schools. And we focused them on the tourism regions that they were, they were assigned tourism regions and certain things that they had to do. And this is an event that is modeled after Baking Impossible from Netflix. And so we actually had the Netflix crew onsite with us. They actually modeled and coached our teams over, since school started in the fall. Monthly, they would join online and help coach them on what their culinary and engineering project could be and run ideas and things by them. And so we have a video I'd like to share with the Netflix crew highlighting the work that our students were able to do across the state.
The West Virginia Department of Education held its fourth annual culinering challenge here at Ogilvy Resort. This cast from Netflix's Baking Impossible joined us for our second year. Here's what they had to say about the students and the challenge.
Hi, I'm Sarah Schonauer, and I am the winner of Netflix's Baking Impossible. And I am so excited to be here for the second time as a judge and a mentor at the culinering challenge. I don't think this would happen without the support of people like you and the support of the community. And this is an opportunity that your kids are getting in this environment to enrich their skills. I can see the real world happening all around them. And I think that public education is so important because this is kind of the antidote for what I see going on in the world right now. Teachers, I happen to be married to a teacher, are so undervalued. And the ones that really care that are going above and beyond like this, these are treasures. So whatever we can do to lift them up, you let us know. I know we'll be here to help you, and I hope you guys see the value too.
My experience working with them has given me a lot of enthusiasm for West Virginia education, for the students, and for the program. These are exactly the kind of students we want to hire out in the field. They're people who, they've done the book learning, they know their material, but they also know how to run a project, cooperate with a team, and build things. Like, that's what we want to see. We want people talking about things that they've actually designed, built, and actually taken all the way over the finish line. So I think this is an extremely good program. I can tell you with absolute certainty that every one of these putt-putt courses that the students have made would be at home on the original Netflix show.
So here in West Virginia, I've been working here today with middle school. Most of them are seniors here, so they have bigger challenges because they have to step up their game to a senior level, and they're only a middle school. So our team with their teachers, the culinary and the So our team with their teachers, the culinary and the engineering department have done an absolute amazing job. They have overcome hurdles that when they started this, they all had saggy faces. And working into that, I see them perking up and actually starting to work together as a team more and more as the project went on. And at the point they are today, they're very, very happy with what they made. And I said, they overcame a lot of challenges that this early in life for them is not easy.
This is such a wonderful experience. It is so clear that West Virginia cares so much about their students and about public education as a whole. I have never seen a competition like this before. I did science olympiad in high school and it wasn't to this scale even a little bit. So for the teams to be able to put together such intricate designs in such a short period of time, and these are kids. These are kids who are doing this. This isn't, they're not full-fledged engineers, not full-fledged culinary artists. They are children who are in school and they are making things that I never would have thought, and I was on the show.
Most things you have to start to plan ahead of time. You have to learn that core value and it's hard to learn, you know, sometimes you have to learn it the hard way. So these teachers are really like teaching the children how to plan ahead, how to prep themselves and how to work as a team, which is so important.
The instructors, uh, are clearly inspiring them, uh, to work harder, come together as a team. Really, uh, giving them inspiration for what they want to do. And then I think also the, uh, Department of Education just providing the, or the, the kind of competition and the, the opportunities that they've provided here today. Uh, it's just so cool to see that, uh, something that I think a lot of us wish we had had when we were in high school.
It is fantastic to see their creativity and it's fantastic to see that the Board of Education cares about the students in such a manner.
So it was a great two-day event and I want to thank, um, Clinton Birch and Adam Cantor and their, and their teams for all the things that those kids were able, um, to accomplish. They had to, to research and study about the tourism region and then actually build, um, their putt putt golf course. That ninety percent, I believe was the number, had to be edible. So that was where the baking and the engineering came in. And so there was, um, it was amazing to see and Mr. Dunlevy was able to join us while we were there and walk through and see some of the events. Um, another thing I want to share is we do have our certified counts numbers in, and we have a booklet, West Virginia education data. And the certified enrollment count for this year is two thousand, or two hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven students for this current year. Um, this is a two point, uh, five-two percent reduction from the previous year. As we look through the data, we can say that, you know, ninety-eight point two percent of our public, of our students are still served in, um, our public schools. And so we wanted to highlight the different areas. So there's a chart on there as well that shows the headcount in our county schools, um, our public charter schools, our schools for diversion and transition, and also for our schools for the deaf and blind. We also have numbers in there of our non-public school students, for our, our private and parochial schools, as well as our homeschool students. And also looking at the number of Hope Scholarship students that we serve in the public schools, because you know, those students can apply and pay tuition to come into the school. So four hundred and seventy-seven of our Hope Scholarship students still continue to come back into the public school to take certain classes. Um, we have the number of schools that we have and then the number of schools by program. And then we included some data, um, some charts there to just show the public school enrollment trend over time. Um, I think a lot of that, you know, we've heard a lot about, there's declining enrollment in our state as a whole. And that's also affecting, um, our school systems. But we also thought it was important to note the, the enrollment that we have in our districts and the change from last year to this year. And fifty-three of our fifty-five districts did decrease, um, in enrollment this past year. Um, with only Tyler, which is here with us today, and Dodridge, um, having an increase in enrollment. And so that kind of brings us to a lot of the discussions we've seen on the news and that we've heard here recently about school closures and consolidations um, that are having to take place due to our declining population in the state and declining enrollment in our schools. And so I have asked, uh, Micah, if he would come back up for us and just give us a quick overview of what that school closure consolidation process, how that's laid out in state code and the, and the steps that have to be taken.
Hello again. So there, there's really two bodies that operate during this whole process. One is the State Board, being you all. And then the County Board. So just running through what the County Board has to do. So they're the local decision-making body that compiles the plans. They're the ones that decide what schools to close, where those kids would go. The timeframe or all that, all that is developed at the county level. It, it's important to note as, as I've kind of watched a lot of these that have happened, you know, counties are making these decisions based on real problems, like these, these things aren't done on a whim or, or just woke up one day thinking about this. You know, there's been a lot of thought process into, you know, the reasons, you know, some of them are staff shortages, finances, deteriorating facilities, or some of them, all those together. So they're, they're making these decisions on real, real problems. So once they decide to move forward with a plan, they develop an impact statement, which is developed in two parts. One, some of it's driven by code. And then some of it is developed by policy sixty-two oh four, which the board kind of, finishes the detail of what the state code doesn't do. The main parts of that impact statement is information on enrollment, facilities, finance, personnel, transportation, educational programs, and then community impact. And even in state code, it says that the county boards must give this impact statement, um, considerable weight. Like there's, they're supposed to take this book and analyze it and give it the weight that it deserves because of, um, the impact of the decision. Once that happens, there's notices for, you know, thirty days notice, three weeks notices for different things. So there's some procedural things about the public hearing and how, um, is available for viewing. And then the County Board, um, at the, their next meeting, either after the, directly after the hearing that night or another day at the next scheduled meeting, they deliberate and, and make a vote on, on what's in that impact statement. It's either yes or no. It's, you know, it's not picking one thing or the other. It's, it's what's in that impact statement and what's on that agenda item. And I usually watch most of those votes as much as possible and, you know, you can see the, the thoughts in their eyes and how they describe things. It's, it's painful for them. They're not, again, making these decisions lightly. Um, I wouldn't want to be in their shoes to have to stand before your neighbor and, and tell them these things. So that it's definitely something they deliberate on. If they approve, it comes to the State Board here uh, for consideration. It, it's important to note that ten days before that impact statement becomes public, it's sent to the Department for our review to, just to look over it and make sure things are, are good. Um, technically it's on a good foundation. It makes sense and it's a reasonable thing because we don't, we wouldn't want to bring something to you all that, you know, doesn't have reasonable footing. Like I think a lot of things can be stopped with conversations beforehand. And then the State Board. Obviously you have a, a couple of roles here. One is the rulemaking, which you've established the, in the policy, kind of the, the guidelines that people play by, so to speak. Um, and then it's just then the oversight of ensuring that the counties, you know, do these things uniformly and thoroughness, um, and they're fair, you know, across the board. And then reviewing the, the final decision. You know, it's up to you all to kind of decide, you know, have they met the procedural aspects of things? And then the substantive requirements, you know, does it make sense, you know, and, and they meet all the laws and it's, it's a good plan for counties. So that's kind of the, the process, the short version. I can expand on anything specific more if, if you have any questions, but it, obviously the counties are preparing the plans and kind of doing the bulk of the, the work and coming up with an idea. And then brought before the State Board for consideration to make sure it meets the law and is a good plan and good for students. Any questions?
Micah, so because we do have several counties in intervention and, you know, that we've been working with and things that are facing some of these issues. So correct me if I'm, so our appointed superintendent in those counties would follow that process with the hearings and everything with support of the department, correct?
Yes.
And then I, as the local board, would make that final decision following that.
Yes. So we would, we would, um, our staff were going to attend the hearings to, you know, be present for that and listen to those remarks. And then presenting that information to, you know, the actual recording of, of all that's said during the hearing. So you'd be able to view that. Just like a, a county board would be sitting at a table in that room. We, you know, provide that information to you all, to you for, for that consideration and your, your decision-making.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Mr. Whitlow? Thank you, sir.
So just kind of in closing for our, our reports, one of the things that I think is so important is um, that we continue to highlight the successes of our students and of our schools. And we've seen that today with our uh, not blue ribbon school nominees, along with our students that were performing in the culinary challenge. And I think that was one thing that really hit home when, um, meeting and talking with the, the Netflix staff. They're like, we had no idea that things like this occurred in West Virginia. Um, this is something that we've not seen in any other state and you all need to do a better job of telling your story. Um, and I think that's kind of been our message for a little while now. And many of our superintendents or all of our superintendents have really stepped up with their schools and with their principals to really showcase the good things that are happening in our schools. And that concludes our report.
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? It's been moved by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Second, Mr. Gabriel. Is there discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Next, we have new business. Mingo County School Update. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, President Hardesty. Superintendent Blatt, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to uh, bring you up to speed on a couple of our counties today. Uh, I do have with us today, Framingo County Superintendent Basili. You might as well make your way up here because I'm going to hopefully turn the mic over to you here shortly after a brief introduction. Um, obviously back in March, a review of Mingo County Schools highlighted significant governance and compliance challenges within the local Board of Education. This included a lack of unified vision, outdated policies and persistent ethical concerns. Central office, uh, leadership was commended for professionalism, but faced compliance hurdles. Uh, these issues led to state intervention again in March of twenty twenty-five, shifting key decision-making powers to the state superintendent of schools. Since then, progress has included policy updates, principal training, improved instructional oversight and corrections to personnel records, contracts and financial procedures. Uh, before I turn it over to Superintendent Basili, are there any questions for me? Well, then I will the laws, turn the mic over.
Morning, President Hardesty, Vice President Gabriel, Superintendent Blatt, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the work that's taking place in Mingo County. As you're aware, I began there July one, and I went into the role with an action plan of what I thought I would be required to correct the findings from the special circumstance uh, review. Once I began, I quickly learned the plan I had developed required significant adjustments. In the first few weeks, it was evident that there were serious concerns in several areas. Financial procedures were not aligned with policy eighty-two hundred or policy twelve twenty-four point one. And state code was not consistently being followed. Also found concerns with personnel as records were missing. Contracts were non-existent in some instances and postings or job descriptions were lost. Facilities are an ongoing area of concern and policy twenty-three twenty-two required LSIC stakeholder meetings were not held. The WVDE Office of School Finance has since initiated a full fiscal review. The district has not made personnel cuts in a number of years, and that has resulted in being seventy-three employees over the funding formula. I'm collaborating with both the District Finance Office and Personnel Office, as well as school administrators to bring all practices into compliance. Custodial schedules have been standardized. Facilities are being monitored and clean campus walkthroughs are now part of our daily, uh, operations. I submitted an SBA needs project requesting funding for a new HVAC system for Lenora pre-K eight. And we continue to work with FEMA on facilities that were affected by the February twenty-five flood. Our goal was to address all the issues, both those identified in the special circumstance report, as well as those discovered since. And I'm proud to note that amid these process concerns, we've remained firmly focused on student learning. During my first meeting with principals, I shared three expectations. One, do what's best for children. Two, follow the rules, policy and code. And three, be instructional leaders in their buildings, committed to improving student learning outcomes. Assistant Superintendent Klein has been instrumental in supporting these efforts through walkthroughs, looking at the depth of knowledge level for lessons, observations of student learning, follow-up conversations, PLCs, and data reviews. We're excited that three of our middle schools are beginning an aerospace program. And we believe Mingo County can be in the top ten districts in the state and are challenging our staff to strive towards that goal. On a good note, the WVDE Office of Child Nutrition just concluded an onsite monitoring and we had an excellent report with no findings. I will close by saying there are positive developments taking place in Mingo County. Our employees are working hard and meeting the challenges before them. Mingo County's problems didn't start in a day and we are not going to fix them in a day, but we are working on them every single day. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions for the superintendent? Sullivan?
Really a comment. Um, sounds like you got in there and got your hands dirty and, and have really ruffled, I'm sure ruffled some feathers. But it sounds like progress is, is in place. And I, I do notice you, you lost, looks like a hundred and one students. Do you know, did they, did they move from the county? Do we know anything about them? Did they become homeschoolers?
It, it's a mixture of all of the above. Some moved with the area, some went to homeschool.
And, and what's the economy like right now in Mingo County?
Um, it's not great.
Okay, it, it's not. And, uh, you know, I, I noticed that you have, it looks like twenty-one students enrolled in the virtual charter schools. And because of that, you send ninety-nine percent of your per pupil allocation to the charter school board. So that would be a hit this year of about a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars that you don't have right now out of your budget. Does that, you know, tell me what kind of impact that has?
Well, obviously at the end of the day, finances affect everything we do or, or can't do, um, because of finances. So, you know, anytime that, that we're losing enrollment and, um, anytime we're losing enrollment and- and.
Expectations? A collaboration between the West Virginia Autism Training Center at Marshall University and the staff at WVDE continues to provide technical assistance as it relates to PBIS trainings for all of our schools, which is Tier 1 and Tier 2. This support continues and allows our schools to utilize their data outcomes to make decision-making processes. Expectations, again, have been set forth for all central office staff to be a resource for all of our schools, as well as being visible in our schools on a regular basis. We continue to recognize individual student accomplishments, as well as school-wide accomplishments, and highlight those as part of our monthly board meetings. Some of those include Mount Nebo Elementary, the proficiency ranking in both ELA and math for all elementary schools statewide, they ranked third in both of those categories, and Mount Lookout Elementary, their proficiency rate in math was 16th overall for all elementary schools. So we recognized, recognized those last week at our board meeting. Also, our outstanding Nicholas County Career and Technical Center was awarded the District, District 3 Pinnacle Award, as well as Mr. Tom Bayless, our CTE Administrator, was named CTE Administrator of the Year for West Virginia. In closing, just, just to echo, I would just like to thank all of the staff of Nicholas County Schools and all of the students for their hard work. There's good people there, and they continue to, to be dedicated to, to the process and, and just continue to do a good job. So I would just like to thank them. Questions?
Questions of Superintendent Cochran and Ms. Sullivan?
It's really remarkable to see the difference in Nicholas County. I had not been up there since, really, the flood, and the divisiveness and the anger. It, now, of course, I just saw the, the Richwood Inn when I, I visited Richwood, but the attitude of the students, the staff, was uplifting. The, the building itself is beautiful, but we know that it's, it's more than a building that makes the difference. And your presence there in the building, I noted how comfortable everybody was with you, that you were a presence. You know, you're, you're not just some figure up on high, you're down in, in the weeds with them working. The joy that, I mean, the cooks were so uplifted by their new appliances. I mean, it was exciting for, I, I like appliances too, but they had ovens that you could open on both sides of the wall. I mean, it was, it was remarkable, their joy. And it wasn't just in the things they had, it was in how they could better prepare food for students and staff. The energy there was remarkable, and, and I know that you had a big hand in doing that. A question, going back over these, what, nine years since, that these children have not really been in a school, has the relationship between the Sommersville area and the Richwood area mellowed out some?
That has continued to be a work in progress. We're trying to bridge those gaps. I've attended both Chamber of Commerce meetings, both in Richwood and Sommersville, just to try to come up with some, some common grounds that we can have discussions and build upon. So it is a work in progress.
Good, good. But thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Last, but certainly not least, Tyler County Schools is the focus of a special circumstances review due to alleged board ethics violations, excessive executive sessions, and general unrest, among other concerns. West Virginia Board of Education, per West Virginia Code, declared extraordinary circumstances existed and authorized state superintendent to oversee operations in Tyler County Schools. Key recommendations focused on mandatory trainings for board members, policy alignment with West Virginia Board of Education standards, enhanced transparency, and community engagement. Corrective actions have begun, including ongoing policy updates and communication improvements to address trust deficits among stakeholders. Minus questions for me, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Haly.
Thank you, Mr. President.
First off, I'd like to thank Mr. Blaine Hess, Ms. Kelly Meyer, who's our local TCE representative, and our board president, Katrina Byers, for being here with me today. Good morning, President Hardesty, Superintendent Blatt, and members of the State Board. I appreciate the opportunity to provide an update on the progress Tyler County Schools has made in response to the special circumstances review. I'm pleased to report that our work has been deliberate and focused on transparency and continuous improvement. Since the review, I've been working closely with Mr. Hess, who has been instrumental in facilitating and helping communication between my office and the Board of Education. We have established a consistent rhythm of bi-weekly updates to the board, and now included detailed agenda explanations to ensure members fully understand each action before our meetings happen. In addition, we've launched a district-wide podcast titled Voices From the Castle, which highlights all things Tyler County Schools, from student successes to staff innovations and community partnerships. The, the initiative has become a positive communication, communication tool for me, for strengthening public trust and engagement. In direct response to the review recommendations, the county has revised some key policies. Policy GBC, our volunteer policy, has been updated to align with the review's guidance on volunteer involvement and background, background procedures. Policy BQ, public participation in board meetings, was revised from 10 minutes to five minutes for delegations at our Tyler County Board of Education meetings. Additionally, now, we post contract costs directly on board agendas, ensuring that the public and board members have full transparency before any contracts are approved. Another major focus is policy modernization. Tyler County Schools has partnered with NEOLA to comprehensively update all county policies. We are now at the nearing, nearing the end stage of this process. Our drafts are nearly ready for the Department of Education to review, and then, of course, they will be posted out to the public for public comment. Lastly outlined in the review, board member training remains a priority. I've been working with Mr. Hess, Mr. O'Call, and Board President Byers to coordinate training sessions that meet the recommendations outlined in the review. We are currently finalizing dates that accommodate all board members with the goal of holding our first session in December. In summary, Tyler County Schools has made significant progress since the special circumstances review on enhanced communication to board members, improved transparency, updating policy, and working towards setting up crucial trainings for board members with help from the West Virginia School Board Association. Thank you for your continued support and partnership. Any questions?
Any questions? Hearing done, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have discussions of legal matters. We need to move into executive session, is there a motion?
I move we enter to executive session under. Yes, sir. I move we enter to, into executive session under the attorney-client privilege exception authorized by West Virginia Code 69A3 for discussion of item D on the agenda. You have heard the motion by Mr. Gabriel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. White, all in favor, would signify by saying aye. We are in executive session at 10:30 a.m. We are in executive session at 10:30 a.m.
That no action was taken in executive session. Uh, next on the items of agenda is the West Virginia Board of Education Personnel Matters. Is there a motion to approve the board personnel matters?
So moved.
Been moved, Mr. Gabriel.
Yeah.
Second Miss Sullivan, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Next is the Department of Education Personnel Matters. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Dunlevy, second Miss White, all in favor signify by saying aye. Next board member discussion. Mr. Wooton.
I have nothing further, Mr. President.
Dr. Stansberry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, had the opportunity to go to Charleston's Veterans Day Parade yesterday. Um, my motivations were somewhat selfish because my oldest son was marching with the J R A T C program from George Washington High School. Um, just want to commend the J R T C program again. They've got a fantastic program at G W. He's been a part of it all four years and has learned a lot and has really enjoyed it and has grown a lot through that. Um, he was honored by participating in the color guard yesterday, leading off the parade. So we were super excited, proud parents over that. Um, I do want to thank all of our veterans out there for all the sacrifice and everything that they've done to keep this country safe. Uh, but props to, uh, props to G W for that. Um, also props for improving band participation. I noticed yesterday that the bands had grown in size significantly over the last couple of years. We've been to all these parades over the last four years and it's really exciting to see the bands growing and more participation in those programs. They sounded really good, so I wanted to give a shout out to all the music programs out there in our area high schools for continuing to get kids excited about music and getting that participation up. It's great to see that coming back. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan.
Well, speaking of veterans, I attended the Rock Branch Elementary Veterans Day Celebration. Uh, that's where our state teacher of the year, Seth Skiles, is the music teacher. And he involved folks from the V F W and the military recruiters and it is very uplifting. Uh, the music with the children, everything about it was perfectly done. I also read to some second graders in Kenau County. And, um, I visited Tiger Morton, um, my, my, uh, local juvenile facility to celebrate with them their academic achievements. It was delightful to see the focus on academics among these, you know, I think ages 11 to 17 or 18 year old children who are in detention. And the, there was food, of course, but there were also games that they were playing that were academic in nature. It was delightful. Good to see.
Mr. Road Truck.
Uh, nothing to say, Mr. President.
Ms. Justice.
Uh, I'd just like to say that there's really exciting things coming for communities and schools. And we'll keep you all abreast of all of that. Um, uh, I know that the children and throughout the state, there, there are blessing boxes. I don't know if y'all are aware of those and for books and well, now food or anything. So if you have a little bit of extra feed or something, just drop them in the churches, the schools or whatever. They're greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Mr. Dunlevy. Ms. White.
Yes. Thank you very much. I had the honor to attend the West Virginia, um, Association of School Business Officials Fall Conference in Kenean Valley, um, recently. And just hearing, you know, personally how they're doing out there because it's a tough job. It is really a tough job. And I also met with Uriah and J P Mallory, who are going to be presenting at the School Boards Association meeting, uh, this Saturday. So I want to be on hand to support them in that. Uh, lastly, the, um, Education Alliance, uh, and their partnership with Hope Gas are going to launch their second annual Hope for the Future School Business Partnership of the Year Award, uh, in January of 2026. Um, last year as a board representative, I was able to serve on the state judging committee and attend the ceremony in May to honor the state winner and see some of the winning partnerships. Pocahontas, Pocahontas County Schools was the 2025 inaugural state winner and they received a $25,000 prize package. In addition to the state winner, there are eight regional winners, two from, um, each four regions in the state that receive a $2,000 grant. So we, we know that strong school business partnerships help students succeed. So the 2026 competition will officially launch in January. So I want to encourage all the schools out there to go to the website, educationalliance.org slash Capeport to register your school business partnership and share the school's success story. Then in January I will share another update as we kick off the nomination for the partnership award. Thank you.
Mr. Gabriel.
Uh, went to the S B A meeting last week and, um, uh, listened to some of the proposals. Uh, of course Michelle was there. Uh, it's amazing how many counties, how many counties need, I mean, they just need help. And, uh, it's a shame we don't have enough money to grant them all. There are some very worthwhile projects out there, uh, but we'll do the best we can. Also went with Michelle to the Larry Pack thing and that's, that's just great what those people are doing to try to, to, to help kids. Uh, it's wonderful. And we have such a lot of positives in our school systems out there that we don't share. Sometimes we don't do a very good job of knowing the good things that we do do. Uh, it's a shame, but we, we really have some positive things and I think we need to concentrate on the positives more than the negatives. Thank you.
Uh, nothing from the chair. Uh, next, future meetings this board, next meeting will, will the board be held on December 10th, 2025 here in Charleston? There's no further business to come before the board, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Been moved, Mr. Gabriel, second, Mr. Wooton, all in favor signify by saying aye. We're adjourned.